All right, good evening. I hope everybody has a good evening. Um, sorry, I'm gonna say grace. But um, I hope everybody has a good evening. So when I call this meeting for order. Um, we do have our information, right? Okay, we're gonna start with the public events. 39, what even?
Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to what we sense, one nation, under God, individual, and justice for all.
Thank you. And where do you want to go, Carl? So you ready?
Mayor, Mayor Diaria.
President.
Mayor Prokant Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Nate.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Silver.
Um, we're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda tonight. That's okay. Then we actually do the C. We all have a paper, or the file paper? Aye?
Aye.
What's going to be, what time is it? Aye? And then we're gonna, so we're gonna do that little, um, bring them to the city council report first before the public comment. So we'll start to my left, and we'll move on. Is the, I don't know if this, for power. I don't, I don't have nothing to report, like, uh, because everybody here. Off times are coming, um, and, but I attended a parade. Lots of people, very fun. Uh, I was just there for a little bit because I'm around, and I have feet, but I didn't see a lot of more girls. But I really, really miss having a band. Like a high school band, or a high band. So, but other than that, as well. Here on that side. I don't, they don't even have a band.
No, we have to go.
I know, but you had like, uh, your family now, they're very good. I think we're gonna be in this year, next year. What do you, Johnny?
Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to extend my gratitude towards all the individuals that made the Orange Blossom festivities happen. The Orange Blossom committee, the public safety department, uh, helping with the play, helping with security. I appreciate it, but yeah, that's some, uh, reserve, uh, public safety officers and, and I saw Ryan in his, his uniform. So I really appreciate everybody, maybe that extra effort at springtime. It was, it was wonderful to see so many people. Lindsay is a, a, picking a black, I think, honey, and the orange blossom, and some later advances. It's something very unique, it's something very, very, very beautiful that happens. And, and, and it's continued to grow, I, I've attended almost all, since I was born, I'd like to be. And this one was, uh, as big as I have ever seen, you know, it was really wonderful to see, uh, all, all the, all the braids, uh, braid flows and everyone participating. Thank you, credit, the red candy, certain those stripes at children. And it was really a wonderful time, I did enjoy it. And it, it's something that, that I really do think is, is your, our community. Besides that, I was able to almost attend, uh, um, the recreation, uh, but we didn't have forums, so we scheduled it. But I'm not able to set today. Um, I was able to attend a Zoom today, and it was nice to see Kedaw, like, you know, the pool. Um, and yeah, I look forward to all recreation activities that we'll come forward with. Potato for here, uh, is next Monday, so if you don't want to buy dinner, it will be out there at the beach. Or the seats, constantly, I cannot accept, no, no. I'll be all day, I'm not, I'm sure, I'll share the party. And so I'm looking forward to that. I'm with the, I'm with the, with the various programs program, my neighbor is a star in almost every profession, so. Uh, I really appreciate it, and I look forward to that. I, I'll also be happy to, like, that though, so I can be great to keep for the city of Lindsay. I really look forward to, to, uh, over to this, so we can try to do something better for Lindsay. Uh, it's something I've been, uh, questioning about, and then something that, that. Great, uh, working together, that, that over, it's gonna, I just think it's better for you. For that thing.
You can leave them. Um, I would also like to add, um, city services, of course. Marshall and all these guys were out there feeding their trash, and there was a whole bunch of ice cream stands, I don't know what club they was from. Trash? Oh, man, they were busy, they were busy feeding their trash, it was warm that day. Um, so we appreciate everything that, that you guys all did. Um, I, I also wanted to send my, oh, a huge thank you to Gary Mally, um, from the Lindsay DM, who let us ride in his fire truck. The old fire truck, that was, that was something. I forgot how hard I could throw, um, that, that. Oh, my goodness, so yeah, that, I'm gonna learn until next year, I'm gonna have to do something else. So I'm just gonna toss instead of throwing. Um, I also, um, because I would love, but I think it was, it was the first time in a long time that, um, all of the council grew together and worked together. And I think it shows the city and our community that we're, we're friends together, and we're gonna work hard to make sure that our city is out of the mess that it's in, um, but I think it was, I think it was really neat. We got a lot of compliments, like, that was, that was really cool. Um, I also met with, um, Sal, from the, from the, from the, he's the project coordinator for the company, help collaborative, collaborative. Um, he does a lot of tobacco education, and he does, um, the meeting, the coalition meetings. Um, so we talked a lot about, just like, tobacco and what we can do as a city and add as a district. So, um, we'll be meeting, I'll be meeting with him tomorrow, too, with a couple of learners, so we'll see how that goes. Um, he also wants to come and present something to the, to council, so we're working on that. But thank you all for being here. Thank you. Mr. London?
The orange blossom festival was awesome, as all of you know. Except for when, okay, was trying to tell the family that I had. Who was trying to be most like a valley. That'll be more for next time. But, uh, always wonderful, and I do know for that, I remember, back in the day, we used to have the same thing for that. All of our, you know, the, 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 it was just really good. But it was, it was awesome, I can't imagine that this, uh, happened in a long time before our people. So if you have family, and you have friends, giving a mic, or you, it was really good.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I attended a couple things, like the OVA, uh, factories. Um, that's a busy week for the, the queen and the court. So I tried to make, I couldn't make them off, there was, that was impossible, but, um, it was super cool to see that. And I asked around and asked, does anybody else do this? Oh, you know, like, how many guys did, and don't. So it's just super cool, because you know, how much pride we take into our city and our community with the OVA, um, I really enjoyed that. The parade was awesome, um, I was exhausted, because I worked, uh, on my school float, and one second. Virginia won first this year. We had some competition, so we had a separate game up, I congratulated her, she was only one, you know, uh, first place twice in a row, so. Uh, the second place is good, you know, my, my nerves, a lot of effort, you said. But we also rode on the, um, the fire truck, which was really cool, I've never been on one. Uh, I attended the senior center of my ASP class, talk about filling your cup. Um, just, you know, like, all, they all were just so happy, we spent an hour and a half there, and they kind of told me that, Mitch, you're gonna get a lot out of there, and I did. So I left that place, you know, my nerves are, just so, so, just really so good, just devoting your time to, to the seniors, and they were just excited. But I did, we did puzzles, we played on the piano, we did bracelets, I mean, a lot of things I did. So I can't wait to get back out there. Uh, I attended the T-C-A-G and the D-C-R-T-A, um, meeting. Uh, we appointed a new director, Derek Winnie. Um, and I'm looking forward to being collaborating with the city manager, and I see how there'll be more opportunity for Lindsay. I attended today, the softball game with LHS, when I left, it was tied 6-6, so hopefully they win. And then I also, lastly, I want to wish, uh, good luck to, uh, Miguel Cabrera, as he represents Lindsay, um, umbrella boxing at the Junior Olympics this weekend, so. So that's, yeah, so that's all I have to do for you. But thank you, and we're gonna move on to public comment. The public is invited to comment on any subject under the jurisdiction of the city capital. Please note that speakers that wish to comment on a regular item for our public hearing on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to speak when public comment for that item is requested by the mayor. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, with 30 minutes for the total comment period, unless otherwise indicated by the mayor. The public may also choose to submit a comment before the meeting via email. Public comments received via email will be distributed to the council prior to the start of the meeting and incorporated into the official minutes. However, they will not be read aloud, under state law, matters presented as a public comments cannot be acted upon without this time. But at this time, we'll take the public comment.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Sinclair. Um, born here in Lindsay, California, and, uh, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Sinclair, I'm from here in Lindsay, California. And, uh, right now, I do take and grab the opportunity to, um, ask for, um, 10, 20 officers from the city of Fresno, uh, Chief Ryer, and, uh, younger years. Uh, Sinclair, three, and one, and two, um, the city of Fresno, to pay for, um, officers. And, uh, right now, I'm asking for more officers to be sent to the city of Lindsay, California. Right now, um, I think it was two weeks ago, we were at, see, officers, and y'all were down to eat. Um, for, um, the protection of the city of Lindsay, California. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Danielle Loia, Friday night market, and yes, we did take first place. Getting more of your country, and I was, yeah, I mean, I was surprised, and. We don't bring our dollars, yeah. I'll get that tomorrow, but anyway, uh, it was great, uh, I'm in charge, I'm a part of the community, I'm in charge of California, and, uh, I've been part of Orange Blossoms since 1978. Doing different things. I, I used to do the Whiskerino, remember the Whiskerino, I used, you know, go around town, and when we were young and pretty, and gracie. To pay their dollar bill, but anyway, but anyway, I didn't involve that, and I think we've always been proud of my, that Orange Blossom. Um, but, um, right, uh, this coming Monday is our fundraiser, that was gonna happen at Lindsay Theater, I got promised this, then this fundraiser, that's for before Christmas, like, that we had. But I told them that the Christmas lighting was first, and we'll do that, so we're here. So this is gonna be a new comment, I know I've talked to somebody, some people about what I'm gonna try to do. And, uh, but this is one of our first fundraising that we're gonna have. And this is, uh, the fundraiser that I'm gonna keep on having is going to be always part of city and part of a, not public organization. That is, uh, and are coming in our city. And it'll be kind of divided into two different, all the time, I might have to do a single one, I don't know how the, um, budget is yet, I haven't, for the Christmas lighting. For our Christmas lighting, that's kind of important, it's kind of, it was like some mixture, but it'll go, uh, into different, uh, uh, different areas of our city that, when we do events, but. You know, it takes me just to think about this stuff, but it takes all of us to make it come in and make it happen. So, and it's, it's a, it's a meal, so, um, we're just, we're gonna start the first one, and hopefully the second one will be in June, we don't know the date, and we're gonna have different dates that we're gonna schedule to do here. And so we can start doing that, uh, so, but I just want to come in, I have to go to the high school, because now they're having a basketball, a little banquet for them. So, but I'm gonna give everybody one, and then if you can't text me, just to see how many are going, but if you don't, that's fine, you can still show up, and get your, they're there. Hey. Awesome, thank you so much. Let me take one, I think, oh, one.
I'd like to have this one.
So I gotta take this. But thank you anyway, so I'm early, and I'm sorry, but let's try harder next year, huh? Yeah. Yeah, I'm cool with that. Bye-bye.
We have been challenged. And we can take it like we didn't.
When I started, I was like, say, my name is, I just got a couple of questions. Okay, and you increase the water rates? And what are you guys gonna do with that money? Because on the one time, we're already using the water, you still make it. Then if we go over the limit, you still make it. But see, the water to pass now, I've got a letter every, every three, four weeks, the water to pass, to drink water. So I went to the store two days, well, by Mr. Warner, to drink, but we'll pay once. One for the city, one for the water. We buy it. There's another thing, I see it's true. People work for the city. Drive, uh, driving a truck with a passenger, what do they do? There's another thing, you see the police officers parking over there, but they, they used to be the old, old man, for two or three hours, then they take turn. They patrolling? No. They eating donuts? No. They drinking coffee? No, this is hot. They have to be patrolling. So it's one of the questions that I have. You see, I thought one of you guys that work for you guys, I asked, hey, how's it going to see? You know what he told me? You don't have, you don't have to go rob the bank, just work for the city. So the job is so easy? I don't know. I'm too old to go work for the city. See, and I'm too young for retired to go for welfare. Okay? Well, thank you.
Do we need, do we have any other comments? Um, any other questions? It's about, um.
I, uh, I think we need a master's degree, and, um, I will, I'm sure, uh, I think they're from the Valley Department School. And, um, their goal is to improve the health and quality of lifelong residents. So, um, large things, um, especially during the winter, on the summer months, uh, the pollution control endeavors of Boston, yeah, right? So they've been working hard with that, um, trying to make it, you know, harder, uh, maybe even go to the dock. So, uh, what you do is they have some outreach grants and some grants with, uh, with businesses and then the public agencies, and with the residents. So I, there's this 80, 70, that aims to reduce pollution in heavily impacted, uh, communities. So, uh, its benefits were the, you know, electric lawn rollers, training for electric lawn rollers. Um, they have hair purifiers, and then, um, they also do tree planting. So I just think one is just not easy. So when I asked representative, um, how many to be involved, she had, um, mentioned that she was from, you know, this one, yeah. So I wanted to ask her, did her, um, Mr. Congress, um, you know, she. Um, you know, any other things in the, you see, um, the meeting, um, it was, um, the committee was established to help, um, define a clear vision for revitalizing and developing the downtown area. Um, as well as identifying key priorities and strategies. Excuse me, for even on the front. So the last EDC meeting was held on, uh, the 7th, and currently, we have six dedicated, um, committee members who are ready to keep, ready to volunteer their time, expertise. So we're just gonna ask, uh, one more next meeting.
I think there's a, right, Brian and staff, and that's why we have it. Just, you just have to, because of the turnover.
I'd have to check for the bylaws, but this last, or the meeting was actually scheduled for Thursday, it's been noticed that it was canceled for this Thursday. Yeah, it's been canceled, it's on the city website, it's also on the, uh, city board.
So who counts, who counts in?
So, um, because of the conference, um, I wasn't going to be, uh, able to staff it. Previous one, and it was canceled, uh, during the, so that's, that's, we've been taking out that. As far as, I'm over reverse of the committee scheme, whether or not, uh, there's a better time for that, a better day of the week. We need to take amendments to the bylaws, um, all committees that are created are created, uh, for the council, so it's really, um, your guys' purview as far as what you, what outcomes you want out of that, and as far as what, um, level of staffing, what, what type of things that you're interested in getting feedback from the, from the community. Um, to make sure that it's worthwhile, not only for the city, but for those that are involved, that are volunteering at the time. And they are, um, offering their resources, their backgrounds, their experiences, so, um, it's really, we'll definitely work on, on rescheduling. Doing that on the books, and if there is a better time, or a better day of the week, um, if we have that within the bylaws, we'll do that. If not, then we can bring it, be accountable, that's the, the pleasure of it.
Okay, well, let's get back to it. Um, we are, do I have one public comment? All right, public comment is put at this time. We are gonna move on to, uh, our city manager report, taken away.
Thank you, and, um, maybe a near for, um, bring up the air district, I have, I've been speaking with, uh, Samir Shane, who's the executive officer for the air district, as well as Ryan Iachi, who's the deputy director, um, over the past week, so they are very interested in coming to Lindsay. And they're doing some programs, so that the, a good reminder in the circle act with them, see, about getting something scheduled. Uh, and so we did, and we have spoken to about 8617, I know there's issue with funding for that, but there's still programs that, uh, that those communities take advantage of that still have funding, so even if it's not under that specific label, uh, I think there's definitely opportunities that Lindsay residents and the city can, can help, uh, on, and on, uh, on, on their programs. Additionally, um, a lot of great comments about Orange Blossom Festival, uh, we talked about it during the Orange Blossom Week where we had our council meetings, I just wanna, uh, say again that a thank you to all of the city staff, there was a tremendous effort to make sure that, um, the city was in tip-top shape, whether it was looking good, making sure things were clean. Um, all of our public safety officers were out working, making sure that things were safe and moving smoothly from a, from a parade standpoint. Um, you know, recreation was out there, helping facilitate a lot of events throughout the week, including that, so it was, it was really a, a whole team effort, um, to make sure that, that everything ran smoothly, and so I just thank everyone. I know it's, there's a little bit, there's quite a few of extra duties outside of the normal responsibilities that happen leading up to that, and then even following it. Um, there's cleanup and things that need to take place afterwards, so, um, bringing this out for, for making it a, another successful, uh, Orange Blossom Festival. Additionally, we're, um, today we posted a recruitment for a community service officer, uh, in the public safety department. So that's, um, active, it's live, um, hopefully that will be placing, uh, an officer who would give a notice of leaving. Um, so this won't be a new position, but will be, um, will be actively, to, to fill that gap, um, that will, will be, uh, so. Additionally, we have, uh, city clerk interviews next week, um, that have been scheduled, um, so, um, yeah, I thank and appreciate Carmen and Ryan, helping you stepping out of last, uh, periods um, with those, with the vacancy that's happened, but, uh, hopefully in the not so distant future, there will be a position that ultimately council leaders can, uh, make a decision on, and provide you with some options uh, to move forward with filling that, uh, permanently, um, which will be a tremendous help, I think, for the city. Work position has, um, a lot of key factors for the city, not just making sure that the meetings are run efficiently and the documentation provided to the public, but there's a lot of, um, behind the scenes things that, um, that most people don't ever get to interact with, so that's positive. Um, this week, we, uh, the lead of cities has our spring conference, as, uh, Councilwoman Floria said, uh, we, we do have, um, Sahin scheduled with, uh, state legislators. So we'll have the opportunity to meet with them and talk and work, uh, our own directly, Senator Roberto, and, uh, somebody woman you know, um, as well as a few others that may not represent the city, but have some interest and have some, you know, have ties and are close in proximity to, to help out and even share with them some of the, some of the needs of the city, and and make sure we have a root for wish and different when there are, uh, funding available, uh, in this upcoming budget. So. And then, uh, lastly, one thing I also want to report on is that I met with the P-C-A-G staff. And, um, they have, um, some funding for the city for active transportation projects, and so primarily that's sidewalks, that's, uh, could be bike, um, bike lanes, bypass, all types of things, but it's something, uh, primarily not necessarily for roads in particular, but for pedestrians and cyclists, so. Vapp and I are working on coming to the council and presenting some options, it's gonna be a significant, uh, money, so, um, uh, but we have to identify and, and look at what we're, what we want to do with those type of funds. So sooner or later, we'll come to you, get some direction from you, see what your guys' interest is, and then we can go back to D-C-A-G and say, this is the plan, this is how we'd like to utilize those, uh, monies to use, uh, sooner or later. So, um, that was a positive, positive meeting that, uh, infused some much needed knowledge.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to the consent counter, losing items approved in one motion or less, and I just pulled for discussion, there will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a motion is made, in which event the items will be removed from the consent counter, to be discussed and voted upon as a separate motion. So I have a motion?
Uh-huh. May I approve it?
I'd like to, I'd like to pull 9.5 to support this issue purposes.
And we'll be at 9.1 through 9.4. One paper? Aye. Do you want certification right now for 9.5?
Get the low, low first. No, one from, 9, um, yeah, 9.1 through 9.4.
No, you can. I was interested in all paper, aye?
Okay.
Everybody, paper moving forward. Poop. Back to me. I know. 9.1 through 9.4 is approved? Yes. Wait, only 9.5 for discussion?
Here?
Um, hi, good evening, members, my name is there, it's sort of, we have right here.
So it's been, the, the pool of this item is gonna create permanent parking, so we're, I think it's that, that was my one motion.
I know there was a real line, there was a rewind with them, because there was parking happening there, aye?
So just a little bit of history, this kind of goes back to the Flurry Foothill revitalization, or the the redoing that. So basically, the curb was moved further to the north, um kind of in the area that's, that's indicated here. It's just past um where the, it's kind of by the, where the solar panels are there. So the, the road was widened in that area and that encroached on the Lindsay Unified School District property. So they ended up giving us basically right of way um for us to have moved the sidewalk. So it's kind of a housekeeping, the as it is right now is kind of what you're approving, accepting. Um so it's, it's not gonna do anything more than what is physically present today. It's just kind of a, they still own the property. They came to us to request that it be widened in that area. Um we said yes, we incorporated into that project. This is just kind of the, the you know, the, the cleanup of it, of, of getting that needed over the city. So
So we entered the, the baseball field?
No, I know, I know what you're saying. Just curious. During, during school hour.
So what we're, we actually talked at the last meeting, um and I've had some communications with the city manager. We're actually ripe to have a uh parking study done on all the school sites. That's something absolutely, when we do the study, um we can kind of give us maybe some direction to the company that's doing the, the study. So we would kind of maybe hash some stuff out with the school district, then go to the school district um and, and see where we can get funding for that study. Um and then, yes, it would be up to the council and the council can, you know, pay for parking. Um so
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, so that's something that is under council's purview. We can definitely bring that back, that study, and get some direction from council as to what council.
The action at this time is just to accept it as right of way. What is to be, with it as right of way? And she never climbed it?
Okay.
It's just that it would belong to the owner of the property.
Darren, so we have a motion for nine point five?
Yes. You have a motion for nine point five?
Two point five. Go into the second one with, with on us?
All those, all those four?
Aye.
Approved. Five to zero.
What do you want the action items? Ten point one? Consideration of a limit to conditional use permit, the newest third facility at Vicar?
Okay. Um before I get started on this item, I did want to introduce colleague of mine, Christine Chalas, who's here this evening. Um I will be going on the training for the next few weeks. So this is my last colleague hearing with you for a little while. Um Christine is local to the valley and she has worked at a number of public agencies and she's been with TK as a senior planner for two years now. And so I just wanted to bring her along. So at the same time, we're actually
The clicker should be right. That's, yep.
You want to open it?
I have a funny one question. Is we need what happened with the one Lindsay is so bad? And what is the Spanish? Okay. The other, lo que queremos más que nada saber hasta cuándo vamos a poder tener más confianza en el agua que estamos usando. Porque la última vez que nos mandaron el proyecto dice que se sobrepasó de la contaminación. Entonces mi pregunta es, yo les he dicho aquí en la, en el Chaparral Mill porque estoy muy leyendo que hace años atrás, a causa del agua tan contaminada, anochamente le despo desabordó tiroides. Yo fui una persona. Mi hijo fue otra persona. Pero dicen que era por, por contaminación del agua. O sea, la autoridad pueden usar la agua, pusimos filtros, pero nos dijeron que no, no sirve de ancho por la tan alta contaminación que tiene el agua. Entonces es lo que yo nado, es que ya sabes, todo el dinero que agarraron, porque les dijeron que no era lo chile por qué no usan el el que era agua.
She's asking about um water, water and how we need to, we need to clean it. How they can bring it to, you know, get it. And she's saying that the years, years past that there was a contamination in the water and that infected the health of, of people, including her and her son, who have thyroid, and she, um she's just I mean, she doesn't understand what is public commitment.
It's all for referencing the writer.
What address do you live at?
There's one, it's it's quinientos Lindsay, time twenty-nine. Right on.
I'll have someone from Spanish speaking from uh city services reach out to her and answer any questions that she has. Um if she can just give the city clerk her name and telephone number, if she can write down.
Nombre, nombre, no, a Carmen, y va, va a mandar alguien que vamos a hablar para hablar de ello. Okay, y también porque hoy fuimos a, a un departamento del, del también a decirles que tenemos ya como tres años problemas con los gatos. Entonces una gata se está empiecando, trae gatos cada rato en nuestro vecino, dice, ómenos huevos. Y se los sacamos y los vuelve a meter para allá. Hace como seis meses me dijo que sacara la gata, ponle filtros y que iba a pasar alguien a por ella. Oh, yo nunca pasé. La gata se volvió a llevar los gatos.
She's got a, she's in her program that's done with cats and she thinks she's a cat issue.
La misma, darle la información a ellos. Porque, porque yo hablé y me habló un profesional para atrás hoy y me dijo que la ciudad de Lindsay no está recibiendo cero dinero de, de, de estado para aquí, para ese. Y que yo puedo comprar mi propia trampa y puedo hacerlo. O para el trabajo de, se puede comentar es al lado de la cuenta, pero no sé. Págame.
Does she have issues with just water, she don't play cats?
That, that she's got a problem with animal people like the big holding, where they're not collecting animals right now, because of the funding. Um so she said that, that they told her to set up a trap or a a trap for it and that um that she could take the cat in to give probably space.
Yeah, the catcher of these things.
Yeah, the catcher of these. And she said that um that you pay her and she'll do it. So
Actually, a job. Ya castramos cinco. Y ahorita ya tienen otros cinco para castrar, pues a uno igual nos ha dado y es una gata que llega y uno se deja remar. Okay.
Ask her if it would be easier since it's kind of going a couple of different things. If she'd like to make an appointment to come into my office and talk, and then I can have Vanessa translate. And I can have somebody I can uh, yeah, I got Marshall come in and we can
Yeah. He's giving her an invitation to promise, but you guess who?
Okay, then we'll do, tell her that we'll reach out and we'll set up an appointment.
Dice, dice el, el chico que, que van a, te van a hablar y para hacer una cita, si tú vienes, tú puedes venir a la cocina y ahí puedes y yo no voy a pedirle ayuda, que me prestaran una trampa porque la gata es nueva. Y, y yo me estaba acabo de castrar. Pero me dijeron, no te puedes culpar. Cárregale, no. Sí, pero me dijo
Is that good, yeah?
Porque ya tenemos once gatos y ahorita están cinco, cinco bebés de un mes, mañana con porque me dijeron tienes, fui al veterinario, ¿cuánto tiempo necesitaba tener la gata para empezar? Dijeron que ocho semanas de haber parido. Porque hace tiempo atrás llevamos una gata también atrapada con dos, unas circunstancias y no la atraparon bien, se le salieron todos los filtros. Ay, porque la bebé ándale, pues ándale. Sorry about that.
Sorry, Claire, but sometimes you go out of the ordinary. I know, I mentioned Yeah. That was called the remit screen.
So the, I need to use this, this amendment to the previously approved conditions. Um this is for the CR Mini Storage. You may remember it, it was, an extension was granted for this project in November of twenty-four. The location is north of Torrey Road, west of Southern Pacific Ground Road. The project was originally approved as part of the O'Hara Ranch project. And this is the mini storage that will be put up. That subdivision. The site is zone mixed use, which is consistent with the general family designation. An exemption, an exception was earned by this project in the past. And according to the Lindsay Municipal Code, the council may grant amendment to improve condition use permit. And staff has amended the conditions of approval to ensure that the proposed use is compatible with certain uses and to protect these sites. This is a copy of the original approved site plan. The reason for this amended request is due to a storm drainage issue. The onsite storm water was originally planned to be handled as part of the O'Hara Ranch subdivision. And due to uh challenges that that project is having, CR Mini Storage has decided to handle their stormwater onsite and therefore, in order to meet this project requirement. So therefore, there are certain This is a summary of the request. And the council may grant, may approve an amendment, provided that the council can determine that the revisions will not substantially change the intensity or character of use as previously approved. So you can see by this summary here that the intensity of use is actually significantly decreased. There's a significant um reduction in the number of storage buildings. And there is more in, more pervious area on the site um to handle those on drainage. And the new site plan um shown here, you can see in the northern corner there is the onsite storm drainage. This is pretty cheap. Oops. And these are the new conditions of approval that were added. The existing conditions still remain in place. These are almost all specifically related to the storm drainage, which was said itself. And how to maintain it and ensure that it um is compatible with certain uses and all others on main spaces in the city. And with that, uh staff recommends approval of this amendment to the new use permit twenty-three oh one. If you have any questions, I can have you answer them. We're in pursuit.
Yeah, so this is not gonna satisfy the, the was necessary for the actual housing, housing, but like a three one based in the same size or smaller as this would be?
You know, I believe, I'm sorry, I wasn't here, I wasn't a part of the virtual approval, but I believe they were looking at improvements even offsite and further down the system actually.
So again, it was before my time, but my understanding is they were looking at possibly connecting to the Mariposa Basin. So the where well eleven site is, they were looking at possibly um digging out that and basically paying for the improvements there. And then they could move the water runoff to that location. Um but that didn't come to fruition.
So engineering calculations were done to manage this project site's storm drainage on this site. The subdivision next door to it um was not included in those calculations. So they'll, they're still Are there any more questions?
Well, if we approve it, how long will, will construction be?
They are in a hurry. They have a nearly approved rating plans. I know they just got this one-year extension. So they are working diligently to move forward with those plans. I don't have a specific timeline um from the applicant. I know that they're moving as fast as we can move. So it's, you know, to go back and forth between the applicant and the city and processing the number of permits that are needed.
When can they?
Mm-hmm, it has. Any other questions?
We have, take a public comment?
Sure. It's actually not a public hearing, uh just based on what the municipal code calls out, but it is um perfect and it's available, it would be by
Yeah, now there is an action item though. Um so we guys, we, we think
Okay.
Kind of public comment.
Do I leave, do I leave public comment for ten point one? No. Do you have a motion? I know, I can deal with that.
Awesome.
It's a Victoria.
I was approved? Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Pass by two.
We have one until eleven, request for future items. Will you refer to future items? Anyone?
I just uh bring up the real public, but he said you're in now, so we just, we never got to the he wants to get to the, the end of the he did pass
And
Sorry, take you out.
At this, at this time we have nothing to report back.
We have so good.